All right, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Vote call vote.
Josh is absent. Nathan?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Mindy?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
And Bea is joining us tonight. Great.
Excellent. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Public forum. Do we have anyone for public forum?
Come on up.
Come on up. So, public forum, we are able to listen to you, but we're not able to respond.
Okay.
So, and there is a short time limit, but I'd love to hear you talk to us, but we just want to make sure you understand that we can't talk to you.
Of course.
Yeah.
Well, hello again. So, yeah, so last month I was here just chatting about the growth we've experienced in the youth wrestling program. And, you know, my concerns back then, a month ago, communicated. And despite the exciting growth, you know, we're limited on space devoted to the sport, for the youth program, but also middle school, high school levels. I think a lot of people are aware of it. And actually, I was actually kind of surprised with actually a lot of people in the community that had also the same concerns as I did. And actually, learning more from their perspectives as well, and also getting feedback from last month's meeting. I actually learned that maybe I didn't communicate a certain point maybe as precisely as I wanted to. So, I just wanted to come back and say that with respect to the youth program, of course, we would love to have a bigger space so we could, we could conduct it in a certain format where we could have all the kids at our points. That would be great. We're making do right now, as it is. But I would say that, you know, the reason why I brought up the youth program last time is, you know, with all this growth we're having, seventy-seven last season, seventeen girls, record high. It's going to become a problem ten years down the road at the middle school and high school levels. That those numbers, those increases in the youth program is only going to translate to higher numbers at the middle school and high school levels. And so, you know, another thing I can say, you know, I, you know, and also learning more about the perspectives from people, multiple people in the community, you know, I, I understand that it's, you know, yes, I, we, we don't like the idea. And it, maybe it's not as good, you know, having to use that offsite location. As it is right now, I can tell you, I've been to, I went to a couple, one, one or two of the middle school girls' practices. And even just with the middle school girls' practice at that offsite location, it was jam-packed in there. And, you know, I guess the other thing I wanted to just talk about tonight, I understand that, you know, maybe there are some multipurpose spaces that could potentially be used in the upcoming future. However, I would implore you to reconsider that, or just, just keep it in the back of your head that, you know, what this, what, what the community really needs is a dedicated space. One of my concerns after learning more and discussing with multiple people is maybe these multipurpose spaces wouldn't be guaranteed space for any of the wrestling programs. So, that's one concern I do have. What, what the pro, what the community needs, what all the programs need is a bigger dedicated space. So, it's something that we should, we need to consider moving forward. So, with that, that's all I wanted to talk about tonight. It was great learning more from multiple people in the community, learning their perspectives and feedback. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm all ears. I'm happy to discuss further outside of this forum. So, yeah, so thank you for giving me the time again, so.
Thank you for coming to talk. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else for public forum? Okay. Moving on to oral reports, announcements, and celebrations.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your flexibility in allowing me to zoom in this evening. Just some wonderful things I wanted to share with all of you. The first one is we had an outstanding back-to-school kickoff at the beginning of the year. And we had staff involved. It was so exciting. We had the band, the cheerleaders, and the Super Tiger leadership team. They were the MCs and gave lots of input throughout the entire event. It was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity and really exciting. Josh was our, one of our board members, represented and spoke and did a great job, but it was a huge celebration. And with that, we had a wonderful video to put together our theme for the year, Lead Build Grow and Together, Lead Build Grow Together. And Jason Lathan has a video that he's going to share with you that we shared at the back-to-school rally with the staff. Thank you. And I'd like to thank our band for putting that together, and then also our super tigers, which made an appearance there. So, thank you for that. It was a big hit at our kickoff and athletic advocacy throughout the year. Another exciting celebration that we have is I wanted to mention that Gilbert Preschool, right here, our very own preschool, has been awarded, fallen in the top three for the Best in Story County. And that was something that came out, and now that we're in the top three, there will be a celebration where they'll announce the winner of that, so we're looking forward to that. In addition to that, we were also made one of the top three places to work in Story County for the size of the number of employees that we have. And so, we'll be going to that same celebration to find out where we land in the top three. So, we're very excited and proud of that, and I'm grateful to someone nominated for us in the community. And we're really grateful and excited to see how that plays out coming up here. One other quick announcement that I wanted to make for this celebration is that the Iowa, the State Board of Education for Iowa is coming this week to Gilbert. They're coming to observe math instruction in the intermediate and elementary grades. And then they'll be coming back on Friday and actually holding their State Board of Education meeting in our library. In that, they will also, so they'll be touring in classrooms, so I'm grateful to everyone who put that together. Carrie Clarkson instrumental in that, as well as Joel Zoss. And then also, I wanted to thank the high school because of the, the meeting taking place in the library. And they will be riding one of our school buses to go from the intermediate to the elementary, so I look forward to that. And having lunch and breakfast with our kids in the cafeteria in the high school. So, they'll get a full experience when they're here, and I'm grateful to everyone for that event. And then one more thing is that we have, before Bea gets a chance, we have another big announcement about, that came out in the area of proficiency that we landed as a tie in number one in the nation in the area of proficiency. And we have a quick video that's received many views. And so, Jason, if you want to go ahead and play that, and then let me know when it's over, so I can turn back in.
Breaking news. Well, we're starting a new year here. We have some exciting news to share about last year. Gilbert Preschool is ranked number one in the state of Iowa for our scores on the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress. This means our sports in math, reading, and science put us at the top of the list in the state. In addition, we are number one in the nation. In the nation. Our night for lunch graders take I S A S each year in. Ninety-one percent of our students scored at or above proficiency on grade level math standards. While ninety-four percent of our students scored at or above for reading and language. And a whopping ninety-five percent of our students were proficient in science. We are so proud of our students' efforts on these tests. We acknowledge being number one doesn't happen without the great foundation our Gilbert students receive before they set foot in the school. While the high school name is one of the headlines, this is a distant accolade, all staff on a permanent. Thank you for your continued support for the Gilbert Times.
So, that's exciting. I want to thank James Schornberg for participating in that, and it has gotten many, many views. So, we're very excited that that message is getting out and that we're sharing that. So, with that, I think Bea is there, and Bea, do you have celebrations you'd like to share with the board this evening?
I do. Um, so at the high school, we've had a really great couple first weeks. Um, we've had some great classes, some great activities, especially a lot of senior activities. It's been super fun. Um, we've also had a lot of success in sports. So, we had two really good wins in football these last couple weeks, which were really fun. Um, our cross-country teams have swept our meets, and we've had some ranked athletes in the state. And then volleyball has also won their game against Bondurant last week, and they're going to play again tomorrow at home. So, that'll be fun.
Okay. That concludes our celebrations.
Wow, lots of exciting stuff. I liked the videos. Thanks for sharing those. All right, moving on to administrative reports, department updates.
Yes, a few things in the department updates. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to review those. And one thing that I wanted to mention is just that Mr. Bannister Pool has worked hard over the summer and made good principles to get all the new teachers in place, and they are doing outstanding. You see that in some of his reports. So, I want to say thank you to him and to the principals for often, you know, Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, says you need to have the right people in the right seats to be a highly performing organization. And the people that we have hired are exactly that. They are the right people in the right seats, and we're seeing that in the classrooms and in all the different settings, really doing an outstanding job. So, I wanted to mention that on the department updates. I also wanted to give a big shout-out to Brett Randolph and Dan Wright. I believe I've mentioned this before, but it takes a lot of work to make our grounds and our buildings shine and be ready for the first day of school and all throughout the summer, and they did a fantastic job putting that all together. If you walk through our hallways, they are shining. Their custodial staff is, you know, above and beyond all summer long. And then on the outside, our grounds are gorgeous and keeping up with the mowing and, and with all of the writing we had, some weeds, and getting all that taken care of. So, I'm very proud of both of them as well. And there are teams of people as well in that. So, that's what I wanted to mention about department updates. Are there any questions about department updates? Is there anyone?
Nope. Nope, none here.
Okay. And then moving, if you don't mind, I'll move right into the mental wellness report. What I wanted to share about the mental wellness report is just a brief update that at the high school level, we have had training with the high school teachers in the past on team mental health. And that training is continuing for people that have not been trained or need to be retrained. Mr. Egan has been working with the high school team. It's an eight-hour session, but it's broken up into two different sessions. And so, the teachers will be receiving that training in team mental health, it's understanding and giving strategies of if someone's struggling, what can you do, who can you go to, how can you help get them the resources that they need. So, we're very excited about that and training people again, or still to make sure that we are, we have those supports in place. And also, you may or may not be aware of that last year, we started working with the Jett Foundation through Iowa State, where they came in and did an assessment on what are they seeing at the high school compared to all the different components that make a strong wellness program throughout the school. And this summer, they met with Chris Egan on what are the next steps and what they're looking at. And he has worked with them, and they will be coming forward as well to continue their work. Are you still seeing me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we see you.
I got you.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, okay. They will be working with the high school as well. And to continue their work, it's a three-year commitment. Last year was the assessment. And then this year is to break down some of the action steps of what is it that we need to do, and how do we go about doing that. Training through the team mental health piece is one component of it, but there's other portions as well. And we'll continue that work if that's, that's happening there. And so, those are just a couple of wellness pieces that are taking place at the high school, just for you to be aware of.
Fantastic.
And that concludes our reports.
All right, thank you. All right, move on to board reports, policy committee update. Mindy?
Um, yep, policy committee met at the end of August. We took a look at the community use policy at the last board meeting. It was brought up that we maybe not, didn't need to have all groups have an insurance policy to be, to use our, our facilities. And so, the board asked the policy committee to take a look at that again. And so, we did. You will see in your packet tonight, there's an attached waiver. So, if you click on the meeting minutes, there is an attachment in there with the, with the participation waiver that we're recommending be used. So, the recommendation would be to eliminate insurance for those parent-led groups that don't charge a fee for their participants to be a part of their team. But that the larger groups that are, charge either a fee to, to participate or are more of an organization-run group, that we would still require insurance policies for those groups. So, that would, that's going to be our proposal tonight, is to eliminate the policy that has the insurance waiver on it, because that wasn't even the right insurance waiver that we were using. And then we'll go forward to moving whether they need insurance or a waiver just into practice. And those pieces will be listed on our website if it gets approved tonight. Um, we also took a look at two-ten-oh-five, which is meeting notice, and then we continue to our work through our four-hundred series. So, there's going to be some things for first reads and something for second reads tonight.
Thank you. Fair thorough update. The next policy committee meeting is Friday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at nine AM. All right, and the IAS annual convention is November nineteenth through the twenty-first. Who here is going?
Yeah.
Who can go?
I cannot.
Okay. And have you gotten what you needed from everyone planning to go?
Yeah, and you sh, well, from you too, I have. And so, I've signed you up, so you should have received an email by now of confirmation.
I think so.
Yeah, good. I have it if you.
I will. I don't think I did, but I'll take a look, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to sign up for classes like in years past, or is it just kind of?
I signed, yeah.
Sign you up, right? Like certain classes. I remember like, did I give you the classes?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
You're on top of any of them.
You know, I will send you, if you don't know, I will send you that, that confirmation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Gail. I remember sending you what I, I'm sure you did, so.
Yeah. I'll, I'll send you what I received back.
Okay. I think we did.
Dr. T would, Dr. T would like to say something.
Yes, also, I just wanted to mention two things. One is the keynote speaker for that conference, one of them is Thomas Murray, and he's outstanding. Talks about communication, which will be wonderful. I've heard him speak a couple of times. And also, there's a rumor, it's not really a rumor, that Troy Banning, the superintendent he works with, may be on a panel about communication and the work that we do within a school district. So, we'll be helping on that, but we're excited, so.
Very cool, right. All right, moving on, the twenty-twenty-five school board elections on November fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, the first day to take out papers was Monday, twenty-fifth. And so, to this date, I have three people that have taken out papers and one that has been returned. And the last day to return them is five o'clock on Thursday, September eighteenth. And there's two positions, so.
And I saw some communication district-wide on that, Vic. Are we still, we're going to send more information out again before the eighteenth, or what's our plan there?
Yes, I've been working with, when we get who's on the ballot, then I believe it, Troy is going to do maybe like an interview of.
What about prior to the eighteenth? I'm talking about maybe, do we want to do one last push?
Oh, we want to do one last push, one last people to consider.
I know we sent out earlier, I remember seeing it within the social media, but maybe just one last kind of reminder.
Yeah, because I don't know that we've sent it.
Will you put it out one last time?
Yeah, I don't know if we've sent it out again now that the actual candidate filing period has opened. Sure, we will do that.
We can get that out one more time.
Okay. Anything else on the school board elections?
No.
All right, moving on to the facilities reports update.
Oh, let's go back to the, the AEA.
AEA board.
Yeah, if you're interested, there's information there. I'll, if you need anything else, there's contact information if you're interested in running, so. That's new this month.
Are any of you interested in running? Right over here, so we'll discuss that later.
Andrew's considering it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I apologize for not part. All right, now to facilities reports and update.
Yes, things that are rolling along, just fine with construction. Elementary is taking shape. It's looking different every day. Got a chance to see it last week. If you go over there, you can actually see the outline of the preschool playground is now down. The big mountain dirt is all smoothed out, and they're starting to work on the grading of what the green space will look like. Drawwall is in various stages depending on which pottery you go into. One is most completed, and they'll start finishing work pretty soon. Each one is in a different, little different stage. It's, it's going around just fine. Windows are starting to go in. Glasses are starting to go in different areas. And so, I think you'll start to see more and more of that seaming up of the building, just to kind of get it prepared to be able to start doing interior work. So, every day is something new is happening at the elementary. Let's see, district office is, is great. It's going really well. Drawwall is in different stages of completion there as well. Still with a targeted goal of being in that after Christmas break. So, every day you go over there, you see a little more of it done, and you can slowly see the shape of the offices, more room in the different areas. So, the intermediate school is still in its early stages of what development is, what X stage might be. And the intermediate school, the facilities committee is still working through some different things. So, that's, I'm pretty excited to see that that is kind of starting to move forward a little bit. The middle school is just starting to kick off some groups with their teachers to help look at what these rooms, the classroom additions could look like. And then there'll be a large addition to the vampire area, so vampire teachers will be involved in helping to plan, you know, get that organized. And there'll be a group that will be looking at the jet states. So, track is, is rolling along, just fine as well. You can go over there and see the progress. And then the last, the high school is really starting to take shape. If you haven't been up there recently, they, they have the second floor addition now, built all the way up to the top, and they're building the flooring. You can start to see the shape of that building is going to get really full. They added most of the walls to the gym on the gym side. Last week, you've been at a football game, you can kind of get a good view from the football field side. But the active structures rolling along are just, just great at all facilities. We're very happy with the work that Gilbert does to advocate for us. Thanks for.
And at this time, we're on schedule with each of those initiatives?
Yes, at this point, yes.
Nice.
Questions there? All right, thank you, Vic. Moving on to old business. Third reading with possible action to approve or rescind board policy nine-oh-five-dot-zero-one-dash-e-two as read.
Yes, so this is that board policy that has the liability insurance agreement attached to it that we've never used this agreement anyhow. This was an old agreement, and so, we're recommending that we just completely rescind this policy, as we don't even use this form. And like I said, going forward, the facilities committee will review requests as they come in for use of our spaces and then determine who would need to sign the waiver versus who would need to carry insurance. And Vic and the facilities committee have delineated that, like I said, if, if it's the parent-run group, that they aren't charging a fee, they're going to be the waiver. If it's a larger organization who is charging a fee, they're going to be the insurance policy.
Yeah, I can, what I can add to that too, if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, basically, what, what it breaks down is we have parent-coach groups that are just smaller groups of usually eight to ten kids, a couple of parents. They're not being charged anything. And then we have a variety of other, we have very large groups like Gilbert Youth Sports, a very large organization, hundredsome kids, a couple hundred kids. Gilbert Youth Soccer has a couple hundred kids. We think we have a square dancing group. We have scouting groups that are parts of larger organizations. We've had some individuals that have just used our facilities for cultural dance events and things like that. So, as of right now, our goal would be that these, to make access easier for these small parent-coach groups that aren't charging anywhere, they would just have a waiver. Everyone else. Uh, they would just have a waiver. Everyone else would fall under the insurance group because they'd either be in the business charging or they would be a larger organization that has liability with a variety of usage, variety of canisters. That is our plan as of right now.
And I brought that up last board meeting, so I, I really appreciate, I think this makes total sense again. I, I think it's, to me, it's the, it's what, how it should be. Um, I don't think we need to have an insurance policy out of a bunch of parents coaching, you know, eight kids from Gilbert. I just don't think that's the purpose of it.
And to piggyback off the manager's comment, we worked with other legal counsel to help develop a waiver.
Yep.
Helps to, you know, protect our expenses as well as to the interests of, you know, the people involved.
Go ahead, Dr. T.
Yeah, that's just what I was going to say. We did work through legal counsel on this and uh, she helped us uh, put everything together and supported the idea. So also thank you to Andrew and the board for bringing it to our attention so that we could do what's best for all of our families.
And again, I know just to be clear, I know this is common sense, but it's for Gilbert families. This is that what this waiver is for. We wouldn't obviously do that for a group of, which you wouldn't allow in many ways, a group of outside the community parents that want to use it. That's a whole, in my mind, that's a whole different aspect. It's just Gilbert kids using our Gilbert facilities with Gilbert families.
Yep. Bingo.
That was the intent. All right, do I have a motion?
Once, we're, we're gonna rescind the policy, correct?
Yeah, third reading, possible action to approve rescinded board policy.
This is just rescinding that insurance agreement that we weren't even using anyhow. And then we're not actually specifically putting the waiver versus agreement into policy. In our, in our community use policy, it does state that we will collect application payment and insurance as necessary, but then on our website, we'll have that information about waiver versus insurance. And when they submit their application, then Vic's team will vet that and decide which, which bucket they fall into and which they need.
And we wanted to put more on the website so we can change things updated without ever having to fix policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, without having to take three months to come through a policy committee and board.
I'll, I'll make a motion to rescind this policy as noted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
All right, moving on to the second reading, possible action to waive third reading and approve revised board policy nine hundred one, public examination of school district records.
Yep, so uh, you saw this one for first reading last month. Really, the only change that we made in here is we just changed the hours that people can make that public records request to match um, what the state of Iowa requires that we have. So we just aligned with the state on that.
I'll make a motion to approve and waive the third reading.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to new business. First reading, revised board policies, two hundred ten and then four hundred six through four hundred nine.
Um, so the two hundred ten, the meeting notice, uh, this will be a first read on this. We just revised this a little bit to meet what is required by law that we need to give for meeting notices. Um, and then the four hundred series are all about um, employee policies. And we just, uh, these made some minor language changes, or we're just matching our policy in practice is the recommendations. And this is just first read this month on these.
Okay. Moving on to first reading, reviewed board policies, four hundred six through four hundred and nine.
And so these are employee-based policies again, and this is all first read. These are all ones that we just reviewed and we had no revisions or changes made to them. Um, but we do have to review all of our policies on a five-year rotating schedule, so this was just um, part of that review with no revisions or changes, first read.
Okay, thank you, Mindy.
Thanks, Mindy.
All right, moving on to the financial report summary.
Um, August is pretty minimal action. Um, we're continuing to move into um, September and um, closing up the annual reports are due September fifteenth, closing up financials for fiscal year twenty-five, getting the school year started. Everybody's back working on budgets and um, working on line items, so. Um, not much to report on for August. So I did include, um, there's the fact tool that I included. Um, last year, we included it and um, just updated. And this did, I put the dashboard of this one sheet on our website for Trains PARENTCY, um, just to putting um, that out there. So it's on our website under the district financials. So just getting information out there for the public. And it can be found under uh, Gilbert Community School District Financial Analysis Annual Report, along with some other um, financial and elections items and information on school finance that, um. Oh, one thing that I did wanna mention, um, if you're getting any, um, this goes back to board. The board, if you're getting any information about that new law of mandatory uh, school board member trainings, that went into effect July first. Um, there's some uh, webinars coming out for that training. That is for newly elected board members. So really, the requirement is not until after the November election. So in case you're getting some information on that, the first um, information, the first webinar did come out, um, or it is coming out, I think it, it was this week, I think, sometime. Um, so in case you get that, it's not required for uh, current board members. Um, but our legal counsel did mention that um, it's always good to review. So maybe we can discuss that later, but it's only required for newly elected board members. So. Um, unless anybody has any questions?
One quick question, which I know the answer, but just wanted to confirm. I know we had that, every year as we, we pull a hundred thousand dollars for our turf. I know we just paid for our turf, so we're just gonna keep that going, it looks like.
Yeah, so.
Kind of recycling that.
I am, uh, it's in the budget.
Yep.
For general building, general athletic maintenance.
Yeah, that's what I, I saw that.
Yeah, athletic facility.
Yes.
It's not specifically for per, for, for athletic facilities in general.
Broader.
Yeah, I agree. Because um, as you know, as our facilities expand and um, this, it, it just worked really smooth when we had that money sitting aside. So um, it's just nice to have it earmarked and so, um.
And that, I know that, what was the term on that turf? Was it ten years, Vic? How long did that?
It was ten, ten to twelve.
And that's the new turf too, I mean, is it gonna be the same?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure about.
And it's curious, uh, that new technologies, I mean, how that work, new technology, but.
I did, I may, I did, um, what I recall is ten to twelve.
Okay.
Um, and, but they did say, uh, they have seen where it could go up to fifteen, so, you know, I guess positive thinking there will maybe will get good.
I suppose it also depends too, how much use it gets, you know, if some of these schools are just using it for high school football and nothing else versus if you're using it for football and soccer and youth in high school and how much wear and tear you have on it.
Gail, maybe we just get rid of that first of eight years then on that. Spanish shares, I know it's not a big deal, but since, I think it's just gonna be ongoing where it says first of eight years next to athletic, athletic facilities.
Oh, okay, okay. Just ongoing?
Yeah, just get rid of it.
Okay. We can do that.
Cuz I mean, it's, I think it's just gonna be, yeah, we're not gonna get rid of that ever. It's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars pretty much every year. We're gonna throw towards that through whatever it may be, through the facilities.
Well, what I'll do is I will take, I have a working copy that helps me know and counting where, how many years we've had it. And so how much is carried forward?
Yep.
For budgeting purposes, so. Yep, I will do that.
Gail, another question. Last meeting, we were talking about the five million dollars you were getting to bridge the gap.
Yeah.
It was gonna be tight. How are we looking on that?
Um, it did not fill the full gap. Um, we're over, as you can see, of in the secretary's report here. Uh, for capital projects, um, without dipping into our uh, investments, because we only get a little bit, we were short six hundred and ten thousand. So um, we are, so Wednesday night, when we have the bond meeting, so we will be approving the second piece of paying back the first five billion. And then those proceeds will come in the end of September, first of October. So, and that's six, approximately sixteen point six four million. So then we'll, so what happens right now is basically, as you can see, at the end, this is all one checking account. So we'll have to reimburse, and we have passed a res, a reimbursement resolution of, it's taking from other funds. But in the end, when we sell the bonds, um, the eighteen will be, will be good. Um, and then we're moving right into the GO bonds. So, and then I have met with, um, our current bank will be, I'll be getting some information from um, ISFIS and our current bank. Um, I do not want, I need it um, to be more fluid because things are just moving way too fast to have anything. So we, we're gonna time out, you know, maybe uh, work out a financial plan of, of, ask of, well, it's a um, an investment plan that is more fluid that we can take as, you know, use as we need. Um, it just moved a lot faster than we anticipated it to, so I don't wanna be in that position again. So we, at the end of the month, um, at the beginning of October, we will be good. And um, and we're gonna move right into the GO portion of that. And I don't know offhand exactly where we'll be at with the GO. I was thinking at one time earlier, it was gonna be about six million. But that could change after we issue these eighteen point six four. But that's Wednesday night and uh, special meeting.
Did you hear from me? He said twelve to fifteen years.
Perfect, yeah. All right. Thank you, Gail.
Senior sunrise knocked down the research.
Yeah.
No more senior sunrises.
Sorry, I already had mine. Cancer, senior sunset.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Any discussion there?
Okay, we are, this year's a little different on the appointment. Um, the designated investigator of abuse by students, that changed with the law this summer and we changed our board policies. Um, it's, we need to report those in a certain amount of time to the DHS. So we um, are still appointing, Vic, if you didn't know this, you're on the agenda. We still need a point person to make sure that that is, is um, following our policy and that. So Vic is gonna be a point person, but we don't have, it looks different than what we've had in the past.
Remember, that's investigating uh, abuse issues related to staff.
Right, abuse of students by district staff.
Correct.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to the calendar.
I put a few dates just on your horizon, just so.
Few, yeah.
In case you're not busy, you might be. Um, so um, we have two special meetings coming up, September tenth and September twenty-second. Regular board meeting on the thirteenth, um, school board election on the fourth, and then um, a regular board meeting on November tenth. Um, I will not be here for that board meeting on the tenth, so I'll have Katie in, sitting in on, for, with me or for me that night. And then we have a work session scheduled for November seventeenth um, at five thirty. And the annual convention and the organizational meeting on December eighth. After the election, we have to approve the cans, canvas of votes. And then um, new leadership for the year and install our new um, board members that month.
That happens on the eighth?
On the eighth. So what happens, we have the old, the old, we have the current board members, um, start the meeting. We do some official action that needs to be finished up. And then um, at that time, we would adjourn the uh, meeting and then have an organizational meeting where we elect, um, the new board is installed and then we elect um, our leadership for the year. Okay? That'd be your last meeting, Melissa?
No.
But I should come in November. That's what was really my question.
Um, yeah, December eighth.
That's great.
Just keep us updated on if you're going for the first time.
Yeah.
Then you're out.
And if everything stays on track, that might be our last uh, meeting of the year.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels.